Welcome to this online session of the of the Public Administration Management Amendment Bill and the Public Service Amendment Bill, Public Participation. Before we commence, I just want to find out, looking at who is online now, is there anybody online who was not at the previous session or not online on the previous session? If so, just raise your hand. Ms. Matise, I saw you, are you, are you a new joinant?
Good morning, Chair, new joiner.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, we've only got one person at the moment who is new. Let's just give it, if people don't mind, just give it another five minutes and then let's see if we have more people on before we start. Thanks, everyone. In the meantime, could we just ask for everyone in the chat function to just give us your designation? And where you from, i.e. if you're a member of the public or, for example, you're a member of a department or the Western Cape Government, we can just use the chat function for that. Thanks. Even though it seems like we have to steal the nonsense and state of information. All right, everybody, it is five past. We do have one new person who has joined. Has anybody else shown us for the first time in this session? Wasn't in the previous session, just indicate with your hand raised function. Okay, so I think it's the one, one person. So, welcome to the session. It's an online session on the Public Service Amendments that are proposed. We are acting for, acting in terms of the mandate from the NCOP to ensure that we get comments. As we do have someone who has not been at the earlier session, I am going to ask the departments to please run through the presentations. But first, just to remind, just to reintroduce myself as Benedicta Pambanen, the Chair of the Standing Committee on the Premier and Constitutional Matters. I see we do have a member of the Standing Committee here as well. If you'd just like to introduce yourself, Ms. Kazi Finanda.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. My name is Windi Kaiser Finanda and I'm a member of this committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just to note that the advertisement regarding these public participations were placed in the various newspapers, the August, the Burger and Buoyakani, as well as public outreach and education units, which inform the public, the mayors' offices, municipal managers, mod centres, Tucson Centres, community development workers and universities. And if I could, please then hand over to the Department of Public Service and Administration, who is here to do the presentations, but I am going to ask that I think most people have already seen the presentations, if we can just do quite a high level presentation so that people can just be reminded and to assist people who are new to this. If I could please hand over to the acting DG, if you are online, for any opening comments and then to ask the department to please run the presentations. Thanks.
Good day, Chair. Again, it's Rosita Amadas. I see that our acting Director General is not present. If I can continue with the presentation. Yes, please do. Today again, to the committee members as well and members of the public stakeholders and colleagues, I'm just going to share quickly. Chair, if we can confirm again if everything is visible?
I can confirm.
Thank you. So I know we are, the stuff for time constraints as well, just maybe the processes, don't know if you want me to repeat that again, but just briefly, both bills were published for public comment, the public comments were considered, they were also then consulted extensively with bargaining council, then also there were engagements with Nedlec. And once Nedlec agreed on the redrafted bills, the bills were submitted to Parliament to follow the parliamentary process in respect of the bills. Both bills were then adopted and referred to the National Assembly. The bills were adopted by National Assembly, sorry, in both amendments. And then they were presented to the National Council of Provinces. And the bills were then revived during the Seventh Administration and refer to the Select Committee on Cooperative Governance and Public Administration. And we find ourselves today presenting to the Western Cape Province. I will deal specifically with the Public Service Amendment Bill 2023. Just context, briefly, the bills, the process to amend the Public Service Act was initiated in 2019. And the background and the genesis that gave rise to these amendments, they arose from the National Development Plan, changes in labour legislation and policy, the single public administration initiative, the professionalisation framework issued by the National School of Government, as well as the response plan of the President to the Zondo Commission Report. So the bills adopt a holistic approach to public administration and looks at all the pillars of public administration, which include citizens, government, the services to be provided and the employees in the public administration. The objects of the bill are to provide for the devolution of administrative powers to heads of department while retaining strategic powers with executive authorities to augment the role of the Director General in the presidency, to support the President, to include functions envisaged by the National Development Plan, to clarify the role of the President and Premier as executive authority in respect of heads of department and to address conflicts of interest, to amend section thirty-five, to clarify the role of the Public Service Commission in determining the internal grievance procedures, to limit the political rights of heads of department and employees reporting directly to the head of department, to amend section thirty-eight of the Principal Act, to provide a mechanism for departments to lawfully deduct overpaid remuneration from an employee's salary. And then lastly, to amend section forty-two A three, to clarify the meaning of Minister. So clause one, dealing with definitions, it seeks to amend section one of the Principal Act. It provides for amendments to the definition of executive authority to clarify the powers of the President and Premier in relation to heads of department. And then also a head of department for ease of interpretation. We have also proposed the addition of a new definition. And that is of political office for purposes of clause sixteen, which I will refer to later. It deals with prohibition of heads of department and employees reporting directly to a head of department from holding political office. And political office is then also limited and defined as the position of chairperson, deputy chairperson, secretary, deputy secretary or treasurer of the party nationally or in a province, region or other area in which the party operates or any equivalent position, irrespective of the title designated to the position. Then, then for the ensuing slides from seven to ten, where it deals with the powers of executive authorities as well as powers of HODs. And it provides a background to the proposed amendments at clause two, which deals with powers of executive authorities. And then also clause four, which deals with powers of HODs. So chapter thirteen of the National Development Plan of twenty twelve, dealing with building a capable state, it made certain proposals following a diagnostic report. It identified weaknesses in governance structures in public service that led to uneven performance at local provincial and national government, including the presence of tensions in the political administrative interface, which they say causes instability in administration. And the NDP therefore propose that the political administrative interface should be stabilised and clarified to ensure separation between the roles of the political principal and administrative head. Then, going further, the bill also provides for certain administrative powers to be vested with heads of department to deal with operational matters that are at the level of the HOD. And that strategic powers must then reside with the executive authorities. The approach is crucial to achieving an efficient and professional public service as the executive authority is then unburdened with day-to-day administrative matters, is able to focus on strategic matters and their constitutional obligations. It also approach provides for decision-making to be closer to administration and not dependent on delegations. And accountability is then also enhanced if both administrative and financial responsibilities in terms of the Public Finance Management Act are located in one place, so that heads of department are better able to align budgeting processes to human resources matters if they are vested with both powers in respect of the Public Service Act and the Public Finance Management Act. So in this regard, it's, it should be noted that the Public Finance Management Act already vests powers of accounting officers with HODs. And the bill is proposing the same by vesting administrative powers with HODs. Also, the conflicts and tensions that arise between the executive authority and head of department or accounting officer is less likely to impact on the administration of the department. And the head of department or accounting officer is then ultimately accountable for the output and the performance of the administration. There was also a need to strengthen the provisions to allow for enough checks and balances to ensure accountability mechanisms and also to ensure a balance of power while recognising the need to ensure that the public administration delivers on government's priorities and that departments might then support executive authorities' accountability and responsibility obligations in terms of the constitution. So the checks and balances included in the bill are the following. The head of department will be accountable to the executive authority for the administration of the department. The head of department will report to the executive authority as and when required. And the head of department will assist the executive authority to fulfil these accountability obligations in relation to the department constitution. And if a head of department refuses or fails to fulfil a power duty in terms of the act, then the executive authority may intervene by taking appropriate steps to ensure the fulfilment of that power duty by issuing written instructions of steps to be taken. And if that head of department does not adhere or take the necessary steps as set out by the executive authority, then the executive authority must report such failure to the President or Premier. So these were one of the amendments at the, at the Portfolio Committee. It was discretionary, it said May. And at the Portfolio Committee, it became must and therefore the executive authority is obliged to report such refusal or failure by a head of department to follow such steps. Then the diagram deals with executive and administrative powers. So this is just to show you what is currently with executive authorities in heads of department in terms of the Public Service Act and what the proposed amendments seek to vest administrative powers in terms of the amendment to the bill, to the act. So the triangle on the left side, all those constitutional obligations that fundamentally rest with members of the executive. They are coordinating the functions of state departments and administration, preparing and initiating legislation, implementing legislation, developing and implementing national and policy and provincial policy, and also performing other constitutional and legislative functions. And then on the right inside, we'll see it's also approving the strategic plan of the department. Then the triangle on the right-hand side depicts the red field. He's the power that will still vest with the executive authority in terms of the Public Service Act, which is approving the strategic plan of the department. The dark blue fields are those powers that already vest with the HODs in terms of the Public Service Act, which empowers an HOD to deal with the training of staff, with discipline management and labour relations. And then the light blue fields, those are powers that are proposed in the bill that will vest directly with HODs. And that is the recruitment and appointment of employees, remuneration and career incidents of employees, performance management, dismissal or retirement of employees, transfer of functions within the department, human resource planning, organisational structures and establishments, and approving remunerative work outside of the public service. Then clause two deals with powers of the executive authorities. It detail, reflects in detail the powers of an executive authority in terms of the proposed amendments to the act. And and then at clause two further, there is a new provision that has been inserted and this is the same provision that I alluded to, where the, if a head of department refuses or fails to fulfil a power of duty, is required in terms of the act and what the executive authority will then do in such an instance. So I will not repeat that for the purposes of expediency. Then clause four deals with powers of the HODs. And this is an amendment to section seven-three B of the Principal Act. And it detail, details the power of the HOD, which includes performing all duties necessary to support the accounting of the executive authority's responsibilities and to manage the department and its employees. So these are matters that are already indicated in the previous slide and especially with reference to the diagram with the two triangles. Then clause four further deals with the creation of the head of the public service. This is also a new provision. Sorry for that. The new, this arose also as a result of proposals in the National Development Plan, which reflected that they should be an administrative head who has oversight over operational, organisational and administrative matters at both a national and provincial level. So directors generals would then report on such operational, organisational, administrative matters to the national head and provincial HODs will then report to the provincial head. So there is already a provision in the Public Service Act, which allows for DGs of every office of the premier to play that operational and administrative coordinating role. So what was missing in the act was one that played a similar role at a national level. So we have made provision for the head of public service to be included in this new provision at section seven-three C. Then clauses three, five, six and seven, these are clauses that deal with the vesting of administrative powers with HODs. And this just ties in with the explanation I have already given in terms of the powers of the HOD versus the powers of the executive authority. And these are the vesting of administrative powers in respect of former employees, appointments in public service, appointment on probation and transfers within the public service. So the HOD may then, in terms of the proposed amendments, deal with such human resource-related matters. Then it was eight, it deals with change in employment capacity. It provides for the continuation of employment where a person employed by an organ of state is appointed in terms of section nine. So an insertion is proposed to retain section fifteen-one, which deals with the transfer and secondment form into public service and which is being repealed by the Public Administration Management Act to ensure that certain benefits of employees or appointed from other organs of state are protected. So going on to clause nine, from clauses nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen and seventeen, these are also clauses that deal with the vesting of administrative powers with HODs and also technical amendments that were made to certain of these clauses. And clause nine, dealing with retirement and retention of services, it amends section sixteen to allow the HOD to deal with the retirement of employees. And then it also amends section sixteen to substitute the term officer with the defined term employee. So the Public Service Act already defines employee. Officer was an old term from the previous dispensation. It was an oversight that is now being rectified. And these amendments are reflected in those various sections at section sixteen of the Principal Act. Clause ten, dealing with discipline, also is one of those provisions that deal with the vesting of administrative powers with the HOD and provides, amends section sixteen B to prohibit a head of department from agreeing to a shorter notice period for resignation in instances where the employee wishes to resign after notice of disciplinary hearing was given against the employee. Then clause eleven, dealing with termination of employment. It also provides the head of department with the power to dismiss an employee and provides that the head of department may also approve the reinstatement of an employee who is deemed to be dismissed on good grounds shown. This is a continuation. Clause twelve deals with other remunerative work by employees and amends sections thirty-one, two and three to provide that the HOD may approve other remunerative work by employees. Clause thirteen, dealing with unauthorised remuneration, is also one of those powers that is proposed to be vested with the HODs. And also is a technical amendment regarding the substitution of the term officer with the defined term employee. And it also made technical amendments to correctly reference the Public Service Commission, the constitution and section thirty. Clause seventeen is also one of those vesting of administrative. Clause seventeen is also one of those vesting of administrative powers and it relates to the remuneration of employees. Then it clause fourteen uh deals with the direction to perform other functions or to act in another post. It proposes to amend section thirty two uh to provide for reassignments. Uh, this is where he has the power uh to appoint employees to perform other functions that are not ordinarily assigned to them. So this is only permitted only within the department. And um the power to reassign in H O D is then vested with the executive authority and the power to reassign other employees in the department is vested with the head of department. Then regarding acting appointments um where you perform other duties other than those that are that you are appointed to do. This is then only permitted within the department. So an employee occupying the post may appoint a person to act unless otherwise determined by the head of department. Then in the case of a vacant head of department post, the relevant executive authority responsible for that portfolio after consultation with premier or present, or premier, sorry, president or premier. And in the case of any other vacant post, the head of department may appoint an employee. So these uh amendments just clarify the provisions that already exist in the Public Service Act. Then it goes uh fifteen which deals with grievance of employees. Um, it seeks to amend section thirty five uh which provides that the Public Service Commission shall determine the grievance procedure for the internal process while it is being addressed within the department. And then the external process when it is referred to the Public Service Commission if the department fails to deal with it satisfactorily. So the Public Service Commission indicated that it should not be involved in the departmental internal process, grievance process, uh which forms part of a collective agreement. And therefore clause fifteen seeks to amend section thirty five to provide that the minister, which is the Minister for Public Service and Administration, uh shall be responsible to determine that internal procedure. And then the P S C will regulate the external agreements procedure going forward. Then clause sixteen, um as indicated at the beginning, this uh clause sixteen seeks to insert a new section thirty six A to the Public Service Act to prohibit heads of department and employees reporting directly to a head of department from holding an office of authority in a political party. So political office is defined as the position of chairperson, deputy chairperson, secretary, deputy secretary or treasurer of the party nationally or in a province, region or other area in which the party operates or any equivalent position, irrespective of the title designated to the position. The purpose of the prohibition is to manage conflicts of interest between the political parties and the administration. And constitutionally, this provision could be justified to the extent that it applies to heads of department and employees reporting directly to a head of department. And in this regard, I think it's just important to note that in in this provision um was aligned to the Municipal Systems Act. However, in twenty twenty three, the the Labour Court declared that the Municipal Systems Act uh had overreached when the provision was extended to all employees. So the court then uh declared the provision unconstitutional constitutional uh and limited it then only to municipal managers and those reporting to to municipal managers. Then the Constitutional Court recently on ninth April twenty twenty five, uh it upheld the Labour Court uh judgment. And therefore the judgment reaffirms the position taken in this bill um is correct. Then clause eighteen, it's dealing with wrongly granted remuneration and seeks to amend section thirty eight one A of the Principal Act. Um, the provision also was declared unconstitutional by the Constitutional Court and it seeks to align with the basic conditions of Employment Act and and sets in place mechanisms to ensure that the rights of employees are not undermined. So the current provision in the Public Service Act, it allows the accounting officer to make any amount of deduction from the employee's salary to recover the overpaid amount. So following this Constitutional Court decision, overpaid salaries can only be recovered with the consent of an employee. And this is one of the changes that were made at the Portfolio Committee. It added changes to align with the Basic Conditions of Employment Act. Um, and it put in place uh conditions that have to be fulfilled when determining the amount uh that needs to be deducted uh from the employee's uh salary. So the proposed amendment provides that there must be an agreement uh in writing between an employee and the accounting officer uh on the amount of overpayment. Then also the there must be a reasonable period for the repayment of the amount of overpayment. And then also the amount to be deducted uh must take into consideration the employee's current financial obligations as well as the employee's in uh income. So the bill therefore makes provision for overpaid salaries to be recovered with the written consent of the employee. And where no consent is provided, then the overpayment may be recovered by way of legal proceedings. And if the employee is employed in another department, then the head of department of that uh new department can recover the debt from the employee. And for in respect of those employees that are no longer in the employ of the state, uh this will require uh legal proceedings or by way of deduction from monies owed uh by the state. Um, so that is clause eighteen. And lastly, clause nineteen deals with delegation uh and seeks to amend section forty two A to clarify the interpretational challenges in section forty two A three A of the Public Service Act insofar as relates to the president's power to delegate matters relating to the appointment and career incidents of heads of department. So this section proposes an amendment in order to replace the reference to deputy president and minister with uh the term a member of cabinet. Uh, thank you, thank you very much. Um, my presentation is over. I will now hand over back to the chairperson.
Thank you very much. Uh, I really appreciate that and thank you for for presenting again. We're now going to go to Mr. Governor who's going to be doing the presentation on the next section, on on the next amendment act, but if I could just ask please, Mr. Governor, let's do a nice high level sort of um presentation that doesn't take up too much time. I think you really did my presentation today. So I think we have another one coming up. So let's see if we can sort of get through this with relative speed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'll definitely do that. Is it visible, Chair?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Chair, the Public Administration Management Amendment Bill is uh the second bill uh for for a provincial mandate to the National Council of Provinces. Uh, this bill. Yes.
I think you may have muted yourself.
Uh, am I audible?
Yes, you're audible now.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So just as a background, this bill was passed, this uh, the Principal Act was passed in twenty fourteen. Uh, it has over twenty sections, thirteen sections were implemented. About seven sections of this uh Principal Act uh could not be operationalized for various reasons. Hence the need for for these amendments and this amendment process. So the bill was uh, these these, the process was initiated in twenty nineteen. Uh, the same genesis and the reasons as per the previous uh my my colleague that explained. Uh, the uh, the bill seeks to actually look at uh looking at public administra- public administration in general, meaning all three levels of government, of course, uh taking into consideration the constitution that all three levels are distinct, independent, but yet all interrelated. So uh uh I'll go through clause by clause, Chair, uh very briefly as as you've requested. The first clause uh attempts to deal with the definitions. There was, there is a change in the definition of what is an organ of state. Uh, this is related to people doing business with the state. So there were, there was this vagueness around what a state means because everyone has different opinions and views about uh the definition. We then clarified the definition. It includes all national, provincial, departments, municipalities, public entities and other institutions that perform functions for government in terms of the constitution. Transfers, which is clause two. This amendment seeks to allow for people to be transferred uh within the three spheres of or three levels of government. Uh, the three levels, national, provincial and local. Uh, and also seeks to deal with managing human resources better uh in in government. And and of course, there are clear uh criteria for for these transfers uh which is put in and in the provision on the right hand side. That there must be reasonable grounds, people must be qualified, there must be consent. And of course, people must be experienced and it cannot be transfers just there. So the transfers we're talking about is from national to provincial or within national or within provincial and from national to provincial to municipalities and within municipalities. So this bill seeks to allow government to actually use its human resources more effectively um and ensure uh that people are within consent are transferred for 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 various reasons. Mainly to to areas where there is a need for skills and skill sets which are missing. A section clause three deals with, it seeks to amend section six uh and requiring that it deals with secondments. It tries to deal with the issue of people being able to temporarily be moved uh for secondments and there are regulations governing this period of secondments and and it also uh it's about movement of skills for temporary purposes. Clause four is transfer of employees upon transfer or assignment of functions. This is more when there is movement of functions. For example, if you're reconfiguring government departments uh through the N M O G or provincial M O G processes, uh functions move and then people need to be transferred. This is there to enable them and section seventeen is repealed to from Palmer to prevent duplication. Clause five is conducting business with the state. This is a clause brought in um around uh trying to prevent people from from while working in government, double dipping and also working and doing business while working. So we're trying to prevent that and we put in offenses and of course uh certain criteria that needs to be followed and and also to look at a new clause on which criteria of people can still work like people who are metric markers, as I mentioned, uh people who work for the I E C amongst others. So this is a serious issue. People have already been jailed and also been dismissed from the public service already uh based on the old clause, but we strengthening it now based on the organ of state. And people try to use this interpretation as as a defense. Uh, so you can be, if you're found guilty, you can be imprisoned for not exceeding five years or both a fine or imprisonment, or you can be dismissed from the public service. Clause six, uh it's about conducts of employees or former employees participating in awarding of contracts or tenders to service providers. This also is trying to restrict uh people for also while they're working and then when they leave and resign uh or even if they come to retirement or end of contracts uh not going and working for for the service providers that they issued contracts with. So this clause seeks to deal with both the employee and the service provider. And it also deals with the cooling off period for twelve months for the employees. And it also stipulates the issue of conservation of fines uh and not exceeding one million, which can be adjusted. This is almost the same thing. Clause seven is a new clause. It just deals with the definition of the employee, as my colleague mentioned, uh from officer. Uh, and also extends this employee to be people who also work in similar functions in municipalities. Clause eight is about capacity development in institution. This is more about providing budget for compulsory training uh when there is this compulsory training that is provided. Clause nine is about the National School of Government. And as mentioned, there are provincial schools. It extends uh this school's mandate to bring about assessments uh uh to be conducted and on the educational uh programs that are issued. Meaning if there is training, there need to be an assessment on the impact of that training that that was missing in the previous uh Principal Act amongst others. And also to issue certifications and so forth in line with the national qualifications framework. Clause ten, uh Chair, is a directive, uh deals with a directive by minister relating to education. This is just a repeal to repeal this section of Palmer following the amendment in the clause nine that I discussed. So we just repeal that to prevent any duplication. Core clause eleven is compulsory education requirements for employment. And there are certain basic compulsory educational requirements in terms of entry as well as for movement from different levels of 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 employment in government. So that one, and then it repeals section twelve uh of the act to allow for no duplication. Clause thirteen is also deals with the minimum norms and standards. Uh, this is where I work in the Office of Standards and Compliance. It tends, this is looking at repealing uh section sixteen two of Palmer. The original section talked about the minister before he prescribed minimum norms and standards in terms of promotion of values and principles uh and linked to the constitutional values and principles uh need to consult with other executive authorities. This one repeals that and it puts in a section that the minister can do this through regulations. Uh, uh, section thirteen or clause thirteen also deals with the same Office of Standards and Compliance. Uh, it seeks to amend section seventeen to remove and its members. And by the way, Chair, this office have certain powers in section sixteen or seventeen uh of Palmer or this act or in this bill that allows for for this office to perform various functions. Uh, but it now deals with the amendment to remove and its members to give the authority to the whole office, which includes its members. Uh, clause fourteen is uh seeks to look at removing disparities in public administration. Uh, during the the department went through the processes uh during the managing the wage bill, they picked up there is various disparities in different levels of government in terms of different levels of pay, and this one seeks to manage that. And hence, it tries to deal with this unjustifiable disparities, putting in upper limits for enumeration and conditions of services where the disparities exist and also steps to remove unjustifiable disparities. and also steps to remove unjustifiable disparities if they exist. Uh, that is basically uh, what this section is trying to do. Section fourteen is the determina- determination of conditions of service with financial implications. This uh, chair, uh, section uh, seeks to try to strengthen uh, the mandating process. Cabinet gives a mandate to m- members of cabinet uh, including the minister for, for the public service and administration, who is regarded as the employer uh, for the three levels of government. And then they need to have a consultation process. Hence, there is a need for uh, strengthening the mandating committee of minister, ministers who are appointed by cabinet. And it seeks to strengthen it by in bringing in an intergovernmental forum which recognizes the premiers to bring in consultation from the provinces. Also organize local government uh, which is Salga as well as deputy ministers. So this amendment does not seek to interfere with the collective bargaining processes already established, but yet to strengthen the process to, to, to better manage the wage bill. Uh, this is the continuation. Also, it tries to bring in some restrictions in section three that uh, executive authorities cannot send, assign or enter into any collective bargaining without uh, engaging and first getting a mandate from the mandating committee, which are made up of representatives of all three levels of government in the, in the first place. Clause fifteen, chair, I'm almost about finishing. I'm trying to keep to time. Uh, deals with the, the issue of regulations. Uh, this one is a new clause. It was also uh, uh, tries to, to deal with managing people uh, who are outside the bargaining uh, council. That is people uh, in a senior management level amongst others. And also to better manage that, uh, we're talking about ensuring that there is this consultation that must take place between various key role players, uh, especially the local government minister uh, in charge of local government, Minister of Finance amongst the others. Section sixteen is just on technical amendments. And section seventeen is just a title change that if this uh, bill is passed, we, it's, it's proposing it will be called the Public Administration Management Amendment Act of twenty thirteen. Thank you very much, Chair, for your time. I think I'm over there. I'll hand over back to you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. I really appreciate everybody being sure to stick to time. Okay, so we've had those inputs. So we are opening this up for comments. I just want to find out, is there anybody here? Who would like to make a verbal submission? Please raise your hands. I'm not seeing anyone. Okay, Ms. Modise. Please go ahead. Oh, Mr. Modise, I apologize.
Hi, good morning to all. I've, I just want to thank the um, speakers for an interesting presentation on the amendments to this uh, different acts. What I'd like to ask, and that is where it concerns um. Speaker one, for instance, uh, talk about like, let's say, transfer. Section five point one. If a person or an employee, for instance, requests to be transferred from a one department to another branch within same department or to another department. Does that being seen either or a person need to resign, especially when you being transferred to another department? Because if it is that the employee must per se resign, quite obviously that will be seen as broken years of service. I just need um, your feedback pertaining to the, that um, also is in the clause per se in order to be also user friendly when a person read the contents of the relevant legislation.
Okay, I'm understanding that as a question of clarity. Ms. Mitas, are you able to answer that?
I'll try to do that, Chair. Okay, go, uh, Rosita.
Uh, okay, thank you, Kuben. Um, and if there's anything else that you would like to add, you can add. So if I understood the question correctly, it's dealing with transfers. So the question relates to transfers from one department, uh, from in, within the department and then also from one department to another department. And whether that, uh, does that entail that the person then needs to resign? Um, so the, the answer is the person does not have to resign because there will not be a break in continuity of uh, services. Um, remember, in terms of the public service regulations, they also is a provision that deals with transfers. And that is, uh, it relates to transfers of an employee in terms of section fourteen of the Public Service Act. And it provides that the transfer will only take, uh, take place in respect of a transfer to another department. And then the two executive authorities of both, of the two relevant departments, they must uh, agree in writing to such a transfer. And then the transfers don't uh, take uh, place arbitrarily. They also look at what other inherent requirements of a job and uh, what are the competencies that the employee possesses to perform those functions to the post to which um, the employee is being transferred. So um, those are mainly the provisions that relate to transfer. So the short and the long is that there will be no uh, break in service because transfer is not tantamount uh, to resignation. So it won't have any effect on your years of services uh, in continuity of services and benefits and the like. Um, I don't know if my colleague Kuben would like to add something to that. You're welcome.
Thank you, Rosita. I think I just want to add two parts. I think you covered it sufficiently. Uh, the main issue is any transfer must have a concurrence from the, where you are leaving to where you are going. Both uh, must have concurrence uh, by, from the executive authorities for allowing the transfer in the first place. And secondly, uh, this, uh, the, the, this amendment is trying to actually prevent exactly what you, you raise, that we don't want disruption in services of individuals who want to contribute in improving uh, areas that you want to uh, volunteer of through your, through your own uh, acceptance or consent to go and assist to, to, uh, to the area where you want to go in. And also, uh, just to add, the employee may not be transferred and suffer any reduction in the salary or remuneration or conditions of service. But if the person wants a transfer and agrees or consents for a lower salary, that can be allowed uh, in terms of section three of the amendment. Thank you very much. I hope we've both uh, covered that. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you on that. And then just for the second speaker, uh, two questions that I have with regards to the wage bill of government in terms of different levels or categories of work. Me, uh, the one thing um, is that, um, that this clause make provision when a person look like, let's say, in different spheres of government, in particular, national versus provincial government. Um, why is it that some salary, salary level in terms of remuneration uh, differ? Example, um. Just this is a classical example, probably an admin officer uh, within provincial govern might just in terms of salary scale for services rendered differ, the, the remuneration differ, whereas national will, for instance, be slightly higher. That's my first question. Why is it like that? The other thing in that is that where concerns the um, uh, uh, when uh, an employee reaches his her maximum uh, notch, right? And it's been on that highest notch either almost for eternity, for many, many years. Can this clause also make provision in terms of that? To put in an amendment when a staff member or official reaches his, her highest notch in order to qualify to, to be um, uh, other remunerated for services rendered, quite obviously, to another um, not necessarily level, but to another uh, notch as per say. Because um, this statement's been made by various officials um, within government that they've been on the highest notch for many, many years. And sometimes it could be or might be that they do not either necessarily uh, qualify for either that one percent. Can the clause also make provision for that? Please, thank you. Comments?
Chair, with your permission, I'll attempt to respond.
Please.
Uh, yeah, uh, with regards to the wage bill uh, from Ms. Modise. The different categories in government. Uh, she uses the example of the admin officer. Uh, those matters of people from level two in government to level twelve uh, fall under the bargaining uh, process, meaning there is a bargaining. We got the P S C B C and the G S B C, which are councils set up for uh, dealing with all those matters for people within that band or that category of workers. Uh, so those matters must be dealt with through that bargaining councils. And one can raise these matters within the council either through the labor representatives or even the employer, which is our department, if there are those cases. Uh, but what this bill is trying to seek, uh, Chair and Ms. Modise is to try to deal with people outside that band. Because that is where they see these disparities. Uh, like in one municipality, you might have one municipal manager ending maybe double than the other one at the same municipal grade. We have different municipalities at different grades or, uh, which are, which are dealt with by cocteau in terms of grading. But there is different, there is huge disparities that exist. So we're trying to deal with those ones that don't fall within the bargaining council. So I hope I tried to answer that. Uh, uh, the issue of reaching the highest notch, uh, it's, it's a quite a difficult uh, issue. Uh, only thing I could do is to advise, if you reach the highest notch, then you have an option uh, which is uh, always available to you to apply for positions uh, at the next level or higher level. Uh, unfortunately, there are no processes to, to move you from one notch to the other and especially from, once you reach the highest notch, you reach the highest level. Like, for example, you might be the last notch of level twelve. So if you give an in- increase in the notch, if, which is not allowed, uh, you will actually come to level thirteen, which is a senior management level, uh, which will be not a regular. So what would happen is ideally is people need to prepare themselves for more applying and contesting or moving to uh, other levels uh, through the, through the appointment process. I hope I tried uh, to answer those questions. Thank you very much.
Ms. Modise, have you been answered?
Nah, just note that. Thank you. Noted.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there anybody else who wants to have any input? Is now uh, twelve oh two. I'm not seeing any other hands. So in the absence of that, I'm going to thank everybody for attending. Thank you for your input. Thank you very much for doing the presentations. And thank you very much. That is the end of the meeting. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, bye.
Thanks, Chair.